Okay, so it's a couple of minutes early, but I will just go over some of the ground rules for the session. So you are at the Bass DR2 special session. My name is Mike Koss, so I will be the chair. I'll also be giving the first talk on. So a couple of things, please do follow the sort of code of conduct. This is a collegial environment. We will have a Slack channel where people can also post questions online. And basically, the the first talk will be mine will be a little bit of a longer talk at 30 minutes, and then we'll have 10 minute talks. When you have five minutes left, we will, I'll give you a notification for the speakers so that we can make sure we have time for questions. And as following other sessions, if you prefer to give your talk with a mask on, please do that. If you prefer to give it off, you can take off your talk for the mask and then please put it back on. So I will actually just get started unless there are questions. Okay, so I'm going to talk to you about the BAT AGN spectroscopic survey or BAS and just give you an overview of the DR2. My name is Mike Koss. I'm from Eureka Scientific. And there's a host of collaborators there just to show you some of their pictures. BAS really is a large international collaboration. So there's more than 50 scientists. And this work is done with really everyone's help and at a number of institutions. So I'm going to show a lot of results, but they really are the result of teamwork and a lot of people leading different projects. Okay, so to give you an overview, I'm going to give you a bit of background on why I think our survey is important in understanding AGN. Then I'll tell you about the second data release and a bit about some of the future work that I'm excited about. And then we'll have six talks from other speakers focused on different science areas. So the central question is, you know, how do black holes come to be linked so well with their host galaxies? So in this picture, we can actually see a case where you do see strong kind of radio jets and you can understand how there is the feedback from the black hole. On that might affect the host galaxy, but this is not true in most cases. And on the right, you can see we see this strong correlation between the ball, lost dispersion of the bald sort of on kiloparsec scales and the black hole mass on much smaller sort of parsec scale. So how does this work? And this is one of the central questions of the Bass survey. Another thing that I think is very important is that to understand black hole growth and its relationship to the host galaxy, you have to realize that the emission is highly variable, right? So it's occurring over long time scales. So you can imagine, you know, if you if you're trying to do a study with molecular gas. You know, the accretion onto the black hole may take a very long time. There's a very different scale. So it's really critical to study large samples to get past AGN variability. Okay, and then the final point is, this is really a multi wavelength story, right? If you want to understand star formation, you understand molecular gas, stellar mass, black hole growth, all these different things. You have to look across the lane range of wavelengths to understand the corona, the black, you know, the accretion disk, the torus. And because these are nearby systems, we really do focus on using everything from the radio to the hard X rays and gamma rays. So now high energy selection is really important. And with Swift BAT, we get detection basically above 10 keV. And so this image on the left is showing you why it's so important. If you look at the transmitted power law above 10 keV. And this is what really BAT is seeing. And as you you really don't see a significant decrease until you get into this competent thick regime. So it gives us a very clean selection of the AGN bolometric luminosity based on the hard X rays. We don't have to worry about contamination from star formation. We don't have to worry about dust. And shown on the right is basically the different sensitivity curves in terms of the fraction of detected counts for different values of line of sight column density. So 10 to the 20 for would be your sort of unobscured C for one. And this is something, you know, all the, all the different missions can detect that. But as you go to a C for two, which is sort of 10 to the 22, you're going to start to miss a lot of the sources. But that is the the black line on the right. And it's it's uniquely sensitive because it's selected above 10 keV to these heavily to sources up to heavily competent levels where then it will start to miss sources. And this is even true when you compare it to high redshift AGN surveys. Okay, so Swift surveys basically the whole sky. And it was launched, you know, back all the way back in 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 2005, a little bit before 2005. And basically, we can stack the maps. So the first, one of the first big catalogs was the 70 months, so sort of almost six years. And that's what I'm going to talk a lot about with the DR2. So that's been one of our focus for many of the papers is those 858 AGN. And there's been subsequent stacks that are longer, which detect more AGN. And you'll hear about the the current sort of 157 month stack that's being worked on in the last talk of this session. So looking at that all sky map, you can see that there's, this is in galactic plane coordinates. So along the galactic plane, there's some light blue sources which are actually in our galaxy, X-ray binaries, cataclysmic variables. But outside of the galactic plane, there's all these sources. Many of them were known to be C for galaxies. So those are shown in the red. But a lot of them are unknown AGN. Many of them are classified as galaxies. Some of our classified layers. So, you know, when when these detections were first reported, it was basically a total mess in terms of figuring out what the sources were classified as. So that's why the optical spectroscopy and near infrared spectroscopy is really helpful for understanding the sample. So what has Bass done? Well, we've tried to put together a lot of different multi wavelength surveys to understand basically all aspects of how do black holes grow and interact with their host galaxy? How is the AGN emission? So we've had large programs on ground based telescopes like Palomar, like X shooter. We've had them on sub millimeter like Apex or Alma as well as in the, you know, with space based telescopes in the X-rays with Chandra, New Star, etc. So we've had lots and lots of observations using lots of facilities. And the advantage of that. So this is sort of similar to our median redshift. Is basically these hosts are very nearby. So you can really get some detailed, complex information about what's going on in the galaxy and how the black holes might be growing and sort of changing the galaxy. So this is NGC 6240. So it's a well studied system that has two AGN, but you can see how you could study, you know, the cold gas with Alma or with a single dish telescope like Apex. You could look at the stars as we have with VLT X shooter or with Palomar using ground based telescopes and look at the stars in the bulge. You can look at the black hole properties if it happened to be a broadline AGN, you can look at the jets. And you can also do really high resolution observations. So you can use either Muse or HST or Kekin. We've sort of done all of these types of studies. But there's really a tremendous amount that we can do in nearby galaxies because we have basically a factor of 10 improvement in in spatial resolution because they're low redshift. And you know, significant improvements in sensitivity as well. So one of the big motivations for BAS is these are the most luminous sources in terms of X-ray luminosity in the nearby universe. But they're actually nice analogues to some of the great surveys of distant AGN found with Chandra. So what I'm showing here is the intrinsic luminosity, two to 10 keV emission from a bunch of different surveys versus the redshift. So in this pink circle is is our BAS sources which are on beam. So there are some sources that are somewhat higher redshifts in 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 detected by BAT, but those are sort of beamed AGN going out to redshift five. So we're detecting them out to higher redshifts because the mission is sort of focused on us. But with the on beam sources which go out to about redshift point six, we have a number of the most luminous sources along with very good redshift analogues to all the sources in Cosmos, CDF and and many of these other surveys. So I should also mention that there's a a nice poster by your own Tech Yart tomorrow, Wednesday at 5:30, talking about if you actually translate the BAS sources and trying to detect them with Cosmos using the Chandra sensitivity, how many you detect. So I encourage you to check that out tomorrow in the poster session. So the DR2 was really a massive effort to get spectroscopy of 100% of the sources. And they're spread all over the sky. So this really required a lot of work and a lot of collaboration. This is six years really of X shooter programs and of Palomar time of graduate students and postdocs and data reductions. And so it's a ton and ton of effort. So I'm going to show things and flash them. But but we've done a lot of work getting all these spectra. So we really do want the community to use them for their scientific investigations and 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 we really do hope you will. So there's 1500 spectra. So there's more than one. And this has to do with, we needed high spectral resolutions in some cases. So for velocity dispersions. So we had, you know, some mix and some were just observed multiple times randomly. So so a lot of spectra there. Okay, so this is sort of a summary of the publications and you can see more find out more on our website, Bath Survey and 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 click on any ones that you're you're interested in. So I'm going to focus. So the column on the left was kind of the DR1 where we started out with 650 of the sort of 860 AGN that just had archival optical spectra. And now our new sort of special issue, which actually came out last July is really focused on all of the new spectra we've gotten with Palomar and with X shooter. And so I'm going to talk about the the studies in green. And of course, you know, this is six papers, right? And most of the papers are 30 to 40 pages. So I'm really going to give you just a little bit about them. But there's a lot, a number of really interesting studies and and hopefully you can, you know, read them and come talk to us. And if you have a specific idea, we'd we'd love to to hear more from you. Since the release last July, there's also been a number of additional science papers. You'll hear about some of them today. But there's a lot of really exciting work ongoing. Okay, so one of our main interests was the Eddington ratio. So right, if you do, so basically BAT surveys the whole sky. And it's detecting in X-rays. So basically, you know, you're sensitive to the X-ray flux. And the issue that you run into, if you want to understand how the Eddington ratio impacts things is that you could have a, you know, large black hole with a very low Eddington ratio. So if we could actually get at all of the black hole masses, we can understand how important the Eddington ratio is for growing black holes. So so from our 1500 spectra, we were actually able to measure black hole masses in 98% of the sources outside the galactic plane for on beamed AGN. So, you know, we really, other other than a handful of sources, we really were able to do this in in almost all cases. So how did we do this? Well, we use broadlines for the unobscured sources. And then for the obscured sources, we use velocity dispersions. So this is showing a particular case with VLT X shooter. So the plot on the left shows you some of the, we're basically fitting the spectra with a galaxy template. And there's some absorption lines and we can get an estimate of the velocity dispersion. So you can see there it's about 172. And then on the right, we can also use the calcium triplet and get another measurement. We also have near infrared spectra of the CO band heads. So there's multiple ways you can get a measurement. And that gives us a very good estimate of the velocity dispersion. So that's kind of how we came up with the black hole masses. This is from a paper by Jacob Denbrock. And one of the highlights, I think, is the spectral resolutions we're getting is you know, for many sources is R of greater than 5,000. And so this is really a factor of two or more than than studies like the SDSS. And so you could do some really interesting things. It also includes near infrared coverage and coverage down. You know, from 3,200 all the way to 2.4 microns. So you do get this really wide spectral coverage. So I kind of like this particular source. Like he has a 40 page paper on talking about coronal lines and how they correlate with with X-rays and you should read it if you're thinking about JWST and near infrared AGN detection and stuff. But this particular source, you know, it has multiple, multiple lines. So it's a double peak source and it also shows a hidden broadline in near infrared. So it really shows what you can do with this wide wavelength coverage. And so, yeah, I think it really is a vast improvement over a single spectra from a narrow range in the optical. Okay. So this is actually all the black hole masses compared to the bolometric luminosity on the Y axis. And I have split these into different C for types. So a C for 1.9 is just one that has a narrow H beta, brought a broad H alpha, C for two just has narrow lines. And I've also put some different surveys on there. So you can see in black is the median for PG quasars. Type two C firts from the SDSS are shown in purple. And the SDSS quasars from sort of a similar redshift C of less than 0.3 are shown in the top sort of gray. The interesting thing about our survey is we find sort of a bunch of different interesting areas that 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 don't have a lot of overlap. So in the dwarf AGN case, on the on the left, because we have very high spectral resolutions, we can actually measure velocity dispersions in all of our low sigma sources. So you could not do that just using the cylindrical sky survey spectra because we have much higher resolutions. Or we went after sources again if we needed more spectral resolution. The other interesting case is these luminous QSOs. You can see a lot of them are green sort of C for ones. But the interesting thing is they are in the Sloan sky area. But for whatever reason, there was no spectra gotten of that particular source. And so there's actually not a ton of overlap between the the Sloan spectra and and the BAT quasars. So that is actually interesting. If you just use the conversions of sort of X-ray to optical. So I think there's, you know, a lot of different areas. And then the final point is you could do a number of really great studies because we're going, you know, over five orders of magnitude in bolometric luminosity as traced by the hard X-rays, you know, 10 to the 42 to 10 to the 47 and also in black hole mass. So really, we've gotten all the black hole masses. So there's a lot of, I think, really interesting studies we can now do. So one highlight from the DR2 and, you know, sometimes it's about what you don't find. What we had in these proposals was talking about super Eddington dwarf AGN. But we actually didn't find those. So this is a plot of the sigma that we measured on the left and you convert the sigma into a black hole mass using your favorite sort of correlation. And then on the bottom is the redshift. Now, what we've put is some lines showing dash lines, basically showing the Eddington ratio. So anything below with an Eddington ratio basically greater than one or log of Eddington ratio greater than zero would be below that blast dash blue line. And as I show in the red circle, there's really no AGN there. So despite the fact that the Eddington ratio is this spherical symmetric thing that, you know, it's sort of surprising that we actually don't find these sources because you can see our instrumental resolution on the bottom. It's about 25 kilometers a second. So we could have this large population, but we just do not find them. So we for whatever reason, remember, we're all sky and we're X-rays. So these types of sources have to either be under luminous in the X-rays or something else is actually going on. So now moving to some other really nice studies, this is showing a paper that looked at the broad H alpha versus the X-rays and tried to understand sort of black hole mass prescriptions. And one of the interesting things that Julian found is if you look at the X-ray column densities and you you go to higher column densities for these sources with broad H beta, you actually or broad H alpha, you actually see that the ratio of broad H alpha to X-ray is going down and the line width is shrinking. So what this tells you is probably your H alpha is really underestimating the black hole masses in these sources. So H alpha, you really have to be careful with that. So the plot on the right, because you can see that offset in that plot going from 10 to the 20 to when you get above 10 to the 22 is more than a DEX. And you also have the decrease in full with half max. On the right is showing the type 1.9s versus the general sample. So the red, so kind of just look at those big red crosses. But they're offset by a, again, about a factor of 10 or more between the type 1.9 and the type ones in terms of the broad H alpha and the hard X-ray emission, which should be sort of following a a flat relation. So I mean, I do think this has something to tell us about taking weak broad H alpha as some surveys have done to find small mass AGN. You really do have to worry about underestimating your black hole mass. And so this shows one of the nice things about multi wavelength coverage. So this is a bought by QSO. So what QSO did is he took all the spectra and did all the emission line fitting. And so most of the sources are actually in the C for region. So but about a third or outside of that region, or either there, they have very weak lines. So they're in the liner. You know, composite or H2, or they're missing some of the emission lines. So so I think that's interesting. But but yeah, most of ours, they're the most luminous AGN in the X-rays. And so they are in general in the C for region, but there's this population of about a third that that is really unique. So so that's, that's nice that we find this unique population. When you look at the H alpha full with half max versus the column density. So typically a broadline AGN would have greater than 1,000 in terms of its full with half max. You can kind of see a split. And if you just look at the C for ones, which are the red triangles. So a lot of them are at 10 to the 20. It's a little bit hard to see how many. But there is this distribution that goes all the way up past 10 to the 24. And if you look at C for 1.9s, there's also a lot that are at fairly high column densities. So these are the types of sources that you would have to worry about if you're trying to measure your black hole mass. And when you look at C for twos, there's also this population that you would expect to have them all above 10 to the 22. But you can see those blue dots that are sort of around 10 to the 20 or 10 to the 20 and a half. So those, some of those are changing look AGN and some of those are 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 kind of unique systems. So, you know, this is something that we can also use to understand better how AGN unification works. Okay, so okay, yeah. So what's next? Okay, so if you look at all these papers, many of them has focused on kind of a you know, looking at the overall total host galaxy emission as compared to actually using high spatial resolution or studying variability. So I think that's one of the things that we're we're really focusing on now. The the last paper, changing state AGN, we actually just used the DR2 spectra to identify a number of those and and get a percentage and found many more than we expected. And there's been a lot of stuff recently as well with with Alma. So I'm going to mention just a few things. So if you think about our nearby sources, one parameter to think about is the sphere of influence gravitational influence of the black hole. And, you know, they use this a lot when they're trying to do dynamical masses to see, do they have the resolution to really predict this? And so you can kind of use the velocity dispersions to estimate what the black hole sphere of influence is. So actually, for our sources, the interesting thing is, in terms of talking about resolution, this is plotting the sphere of influence taken from the loss dispersions and compared to the redshift. And the so the blue dots are sort of all of our C for 1.9s and C for twos that we measured. The orange ones are ones that have dynamical masses or or masses from hazers. So there's this, and then the black dash line sources above that, you have the resolution to resolve basically down to the sphere of influence with the near infrared, as long as it's sort of in your band pass. If you're at using JWST, you can go out past about Z of 0.25 and actually get those CEO band heads. And then also Alma can can, you know, go down to very high resolutions and cover most of the targets. So we really can actually go down to the sphere of influence for most of the AGN in our sample. So if you want to understand, you know, dual AGN, if you wanted to understand star formation, if you want to understand molecular gas and how it interacts with what the black hole is doing, there's this incredible opportunity to go to really high resolutions and figure out on much smaller scales how they work. Okay, so one of the other things we're doing is this is UV and Alma. So we have a SNAP program doing, we've done about 100 sources. And we also have various Alma programs. We're now at about 150 to 200 AGN that we have at high resolutions. So we're putting all that together. And that's really exciting to to kind of understand how star formation and molecular gas are important, much closer in to the black hole and sort of the sub kiloparsec regime. There's a lot of stuff with variability. So this is a paper that's studying all of the UV emission that we have from UVA. We have 32,000 data points. And we also have, you know, this HST UV data where we got simultaneous data. So we're trying to put that together and get a much better estimate of bolometric luminosity and also sort of the the variability of AGN emission. This is a nice recent paper by Calamoru, which found a very strong correlation between the hard X-rays and the nuclear emission from Alma. This is a really nice study because I think it paves the way and really shows why multi wavelength studies are really important. And I'm sort of running out of time here, but I'll just mention, you know, if you can detect things with Alma at these high resolutions, we're also doing, you know, dual AGN surveys. So we have a post merger survey to look for hidden hidden sort of duels with Alma. Tomorrow, I'll talk about a 230 parsec dual AGN that we detected and we have a lot of great data for and we had a press release for yesterday. So to finish up, the Bass survey will continue with many exciting, exciting results. We've got a lot of grants. So we're hiring postdocs and we have students working on a variety of projects. We have new projects with Alma, with HST, with adaptive optics. And of course, you know, the Bass Data Release 3 and Beyond is is coming. So here is my summary. I will just leave that up. I'll also mention that after this talk or after the set of talks, Richard Moshatsky is giving a plenary and we'll also mention some more stuff about Swift BAT and BAS. If you have a scientific idea, please do come talk to me, send me an email. Come to the poster session or talk to any of these speakers and and we can talk about how we can get you involved. Or if you need help using some of the data. So thank you so much. So questions? I don't know if you want to share my question. Okay, all right.
Thanks for this great overview. I was wondering if you could comment. I don't know if this is on. Yeah, I was wondering if you could comment on the extent to which you're, so you talked a ton about the follow up of these sources.
Right.
But if you could comment on the extent to which your science is sensitive to the sensitivity of the catalog that you're getting from that? What you would want in a perfect world? What's the marginal science increase for X percent increase in sensitivity?
Yeah, I mean, I I I think one of the things, you know, going back to sort of the parameter space that we can study very quickly here. Oops. Too far. Sorry. Okay, sorry about that. You know, we don't really probe into the really luminous QSOs. So, you know, if you can get more sensitivity, you get more of those. And you really do get more of the the dwarf AGN. So there's also, you know, I mean, I think there's a lot you can do putting it together with with other wavelengths. But certainly, you know, deeper surveys will give you a larger population of those types of sources which are which are interesting. So, you know, we're I mean, I will say that, you know, this, you know, the 105 month was about 20% more sensitive. But and we just get a lot of a lot more interesting sources in terms of dual AGN and other stuff like that as well. So I don't, I don't think there's a firm limit. I think there's a lot that we can learn also from other wavelengths and and surveys, but
Yeah, I mean, it just occurs to me that, you know, you're describing just a massive amount of incredibly detailed and and great work that's been done over decades. But, you know, clearly you've developed new strategies and new techniques for following up these these
Right.
objects from the catalog. But the production of the catalog hasn't fundamentally changed in 20 years. And it occurs to me that maybe some effort could be dedicated to developing new And it occurs to me that maybe some effort could be dedicated to developing new analysis techniques on the bad side with, you know, very large yield.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, and I think Hans will will talk a little bit more about that. I mean, there's certainly you can do weighting and other stuff like that to find combed in the AGN and other stuff like that. So yeah, I do think that we're still, you know, 157 month, you're still increasing the percentage sensitivity, but. But yeah, I think there's a lot of really interesting things. So is anybody keeping track of Slack? I don't know how I see the questions on Slack. Can somebody check on our session? Are there any other questions? I I can just answer the questions on Slack directly because I don't want to. Go over time here. Okay, so yeah, feel free to put your questions on Slack and I can. Answer them there. Ezekiel, you went to.
It will come up in a second, yes. Yeah. Sorry. Okay. Okay, uh yeah, thank you very much. So uh today I'm going to present uh one of the. Papers that were we had a as part of DR two. Uh this is actually worked at led by Federica Ritchie. When she was a postdoc uh working in our group in in Santiago, now she is uh she is at the University of Rome in Italy. And basically, while this is a very long title, what probably take like five minutes to go through. But essentially, what the 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 bottom line is that we added uh near infrared spectroscopy. To the to the bass AGN uh and why we wanted to do that. Uh part of the motivation was uh coming from measuring black hole masses and using. The well, black hole masses starting from the reverberation mapping, which of course are very few and you use this sort of factor. Correction factor F, which is called the variable factor in order to to. To estimate black hole masses, which you normally you don't have for for many for many of the sources, actually for bass, we have for very few, if at all. So so what we do normally do is that you assume. Another real factor for the whole sample, even and even for obscure and unobscured systems for sources independent of properties. And what we wanted to do and one of the main motivations for this work was to see whether this uh this variable factor actually. Shows on dependence, so we can assume the same one for 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 all AGN. That was one motivation, but not the other, the only one. Of course, the the other advantage of going to the near infrared is that at least in principle, you're less affected by by obscuration. So in in theory, we can, if we use near infrared lines instead of the more traditional optical lines. We should be able to to be less affected by obscuration and have a more direct uh view. Of the broadline vision and recover uh broad emission lines where where is possible. And again, there's been a lot of work uh in this in the past. Uh basically, passion alpha and passion beta are sort of the most important. Uh or at least the strongest hydrogen emission lines that we see at near infrared wavelengths. So a little bit more more details, so these are sort of the main motivations, again, measuring or estimating the the variable factor was one of. One of the most important one, but also we wanted to build a one of the most important, Mike already mentioned, one of. One of the most important characteristics of the bass sample is the high completeness for black hole masses. And of course, going to the to the near infrared really help in that regard. And for that, and in particular for for this project, we took new observations. With uh with the fire instrument, the fire near infrared spectrograph at the Magellan telescopes. We got here's uh we we got nights over spread over three semesters in 2018 and 2019. Uh which roughly targeted sixty five AGN. Uh as as part of this work, you can see here a few examples of the spectra that we have that I'm taking from from Federica's paper and how we. We did the modeling and the the fitting of the of the mission lines using broad both abroad and a narrow emission component. And we complemented that this this was for the DR two, but we also we complemented this. This information with the spectrum near infrared spectra taken as part of the of the DR one sample as well. Which was uh which was already published and with that in mind, we we had about 314. Unique near infrared spectra, but then when you look at them. Sources in which we actually were able to detect and feed a line, the samples were the samples were a bit smaller, which is what I'm showing in. In this in this blood, so because I only have two minutes left, as going very quickly over the results. So first, we compare the full width half maximum that that we get for for the different lines going from. From helium one, which is at the roughly one micron, one point micron, passion beta, passion alpha. And one of the near infrared line, which is the near infrared, and in general. We find that there is a very good consistent with consistency between. The full width half maximum may an H alpha and the near infrared lines. So we did a little bit more on that, so for example, here we are comparing again. The full width half maximum in each of these lines, the same lines that I was mentioning before. As a function of column density, neuter hydrogen column density in X-rays. And also as the function of the flux in the in the bottom panels. And in general, we we can see the statistical trends, they're all consistent with with flat roughly. So basically, it seems like the full width half maximum is not affected. By either extinction or or obscuration, once we detected the broad H alpha line. Uh similar thing uh here, and you can see now specifically measuring the average for width half maximum. For each of the nor uh near infrared lines. And you can see that there is, there seems to be a decrease, but only when you go to column densities about ten to a twenty three or so. So what this clearly shows and it confirms what we were expecting is that indeed going to the near infrared means that you're less affected by by obscuration. This was, this was comparing the full width half maximum now, in this case, this is comparing the actual flux of the line. And here the situation is a bit different, we are comparing the average fluxes in H alpha to the flux in the line. And you can see that it that here, as you might expect. The flux of the line gets more gets higher as you go to longer wavelengths. So for example, you typically recover more flux, you have higher fluxes. Uh in the in the in the longer wavelength lines, like for example, passion alpha. Which again is sort of what you expected, so the bottom line is that the full width half maximum are not affected, but the fluxes of the lines are affected. Uh and so there is an advantage in going to to longer wavelengths, which is somewhat reflected here as well. Now I'm going to the to the last part uh of of the thought when 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 you do see. A difference in column densities, we are when we are comparing the variable black hole masses derived from H alpha. Versus the one in different lines and in this case is from helium one only, but we have similar plots for for the other lines as well. Um. You can see up against similar results uh comparing H alpha in the in all the different lines. Uh as a function of column density, so as you expect. Uh as you go to longer wavelength, you're less affected by obscuration. So final part, uh going back to the F factor, we compare first, this is the first. Uh comparison of the distribution of F factor of video factors that we get for all the different types of sources, different ones. Uh 1.8, 1.9 and Seaford tools, and in general, they all have good agreement, both uh they all center around zero and they have similar spread. Here we we go through more detail and look at possible correlations, for example, with redshift, which you might expect. Even though there is, if there's something, there's only a very weak redshift dependence of the F factor. Uh we also compare with an H and at least when you go to the. To the longer wavelength lines, that doesn't seem to be an effect. And the only effect that that we found was eh with the actual intensity of the line. And in this case, it is not a simple antico correlation, so it's not proportional to the to the. Flux of the line or the master you get for the to the of the line to the minus one, but it's actually. Flatter than flatter than that, and it's possible has to do with also the dependence of the of the mass. For on the on the full width half maximum, so because I'm running out of time, right? So these are sort of the conclusions of of the paper, so thank you very much.
Okay, great, we have enough time, is you probably might have time for one question, if anyone wants to ask one. And. Okay, let's let's actually go and switch over.
Yeah, sorry.
Feel free to um post on Slack if you have any questions. So our next speaker will be uh Tonima Anana from Dartmouth.
Okay, so. I'm going to be talking about the accretion rate distribution function that we constrained using best DR two data. So in the past decade, there have been half a dozen luminosity functions for agent that has been constrained. And our understanding of how uh things like obscure fraction change with luminosity uh uh changes. Um this mainly we understand in terms of luminosity because calculating accretion rate distribution is more difficult. Because to calculate equation grid distribution, we also need uh the measurement of mass and as Ezekiel's talk and many other talks have shown in the yesterday and today. Mass is very difficult to measure for AGN and the dispersion in mass is very high, half a deck or even more. Oh, sorry, okay, um okay, so uh mass measurement is very difficult, so constraining accretion rate distribution is very difficult. Uh in the past before uh uh so in this sense, uh DR two sample has been very valuable. Uh because we have unprecedented uh mass completeness, we have so much spectroscopy. And we have extra luminosity and obscuration calculated from um so bad data and uh lower energy extra telescopes have also contributed. So we have a detailed measurement for all of these things. Uh and because of swift bats high energy extra window, we also have a significant extra population. So prior to our work, all of the accretion rate distributions that have been constrained, whereas you can see uh for um. Oh, there's a clicker, never mind, uh so all of the work that have been previously done for either type one agent or for luminous quasars. And not for obscured AGN, so our understanding of how accretion rate varies, it's really all dependent upon uh uh unobscured AGN samples. So with uh and also you can see that some of these uh uh the. Samples were only analyzed using one of our V max, which is a statistical method which has a many shortcomings. It doesn't account for sample function or um. Uh Eddington bias, which is what happens when you have a big uncertainty in mass and some objects gather from one bin to another. Uh this this kind of issues are not uh taken care of very well by one of our V max. So what we did was, we um used um the most sophisticated methodology and it developed on it so that we can also account for obscuration. So we used a Bayesian technique which accounts for sample function, we used, we have a very good understanding of the selection function for bass. We use that, we also convolved with the uh so these are all these, you can see all these Gaussians for uh taking into account the uh scatter in mass and luminosity. And we also took into account obscuration, so we using all of these, we were able to uh constrain the intrinsic. Accretion rate distribution and black hole mass function for not just uh unobscured agent but obscured agent as well. So the main improvements we made with the statistical methodology we use, we have spectroscopic completeness. And we were able to constrain this for obscured agent for for the first time for a directly observed sample of of a. Obscured agent, previously it was mainly extrapolation from having constrained the unobscured accretion with distribution. Of using galaxy samples to do it indirectly. So the main result that we have is that uh previously we had a lot of luminosity functions, right? And luminosity is just the product of accretion rate and black hole mass, uh black hole mass. So now if we look at the black hole mass function for bass, so this is the black hole mass function, the Y axis is the space density and the X axis is mass. The blue line shows the black hole mass function for unobscured agent and red red for obscured. You can see that there's a lot of overlap between these two, they are not significantly different from each other. So we don't think the main difference comes from black hole mass function. It seems like the main difference comes from the high accretion rate end of the accretion grid distribution function. Where the obscured and unobscured day agent differ significantly, as you can see. This is one result, the definition of distribution function is significantly for obscure and unobscured agent is significantly different from each other, especially at higher creation rates. Another important result we found is that if we don't impose any uh assumptions about mass independence or mass dependence. But split our sample up in two bins of mass, the shape doesn't change for the high mass bin, uh which is the green one and low mass, which is purple. Normalization changes because we have a lot more low mass agent compared to high mass agent, but the shape remains the same. Uh it doesn't depend on the mass bin, but it does depend on how the level of obscuration. So we didn't have any constraints about this mass independence before, but now observationally we can see. That the intrinsic accretion distribution seems to be mass independent, at least in the local universe, uh but it's dependent on obscuration. So these are the main results, what is the physical implications of this? So uh in uh 2006 and 2008, Fabian Etal predicted that at this edent ratio log a lamb eight of minus one point seven. Is where the agent becomes powerful enough to start blowing away dust and gas from around it. And we see that this is where this distinction between these two accretion distribution start. So what we think is happening, once an agent is triggered from low accretion rate to high accretion rate. So here this plot shows a fusion rate in the uh X axis and obscure in column density in the Y axis. So agent gets triggered, it moves to high fusion rate, if it's obscured, it just becomes powerful enough to start blowing away dust and gas and it's going through this transition period, right? So this is what we think is happening, this is what the physical picture is. So uh because there is so little activity going on at lower accretion rates, we believe that pure geometric unification does apply. But only at lower accretion rates, at higher accretion rate, there is some sort of transition going on. So that's the modification, I think, that is implied by what we what we are finding. It was very important, so uh here uh we usually take the covering factor of the dusty terrace as the ratio of obscurity agent to all agent. So this is the narrow line and broad line, and we have also constrained uh uh this these functions in terms of log image as we uh measure using X-rays. So how much column density of gas and dust we have in our point of view, so I will show that in a minute. But let's if we're looking at covering factor, if we're calculating covering factor by obscured overall. Um at low accretion rates, it it can actually be the physical covering factor at higher accretion rate. It's probably time average covering factor because it's changing over time. And in our uh not in our uh 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 actually supplement uh DR two special review, we have just the broadline and narrowline vision race. Uh we have also published this these functions divided in bins of log image in a letter later. And this is basically the physical picture that we have right now, geometric unification uh at lower accretion rate and at higher accretion rate, it's temporal evolution. So the main takeaway is uh basically what I said, the low and high land, the difference in low and high land. And then uh we also find that by uh studying the difference between these function and and this function. We also see that there are broadlines that become visible much, much sooner than uh. Uh even if there is gas and dust along our line of sight according to extreme measurements, broadlines become visible uh much sooner than that. Probably because the broadline region is spherical. And so uh the scale height of the broadline region possibly becomes visible much sooner than like all the gas and dust is blown away. And yeah, and the local aggression, sorry, oh, okay, it went away, uh is mass independent, so yes, that's that's what we found.
So do we have questions if you want to come up to the front? So um I have one question. So. We don't have that many low luminosity AGN and really small mass black holes, but do you think that could radically sort of transform our understanding or be a possible?
But do you think that could radically sort of transform our understanding or be a possible issue?
Ah, so I think where the sample is very small. I mean, it is most strongly constrained in like the range in which we had like a significant. So that's why I don't go beyond a law, a log limit minus three. But yeah, I wouldn't say anything about accretion rates less than that, just because our sample is not very strong that, yeah. Yeah, I mean. Since we find that the progression rate is mass independent. If we extrapolate this to Dwarf G and maybe we can start predicting some things for what we should see.
I guess I had a question kind of similar related, but do you see any kind of difference in galaxy mass?
We haven't, we haven't actually looked at it in terms of galaxy mass yet, but that's, that's an interesting project. Yes. This.
Here we find out your agent. We use as well as many of them to show that some of them they have been obscured, but they are. They they have a broad.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah. So here for the for the the best special review paper. We only divided the sample in broad line and narrow line and anything with any broad line went into the blue. Function here and then only purely narrow lines are the red function here. But we also divided it up in terms of login age. And there are, just like Ezekiel just showed, there are things which has some broad lines, but they also seem to have high obscuration. In X rays along our line of sight. So I think that has to do with just the way these two things are, the dusty terrace and then the broadline region is more spherical. So I think that's why we see some broad lines, even when there might be some, some, some dusty airline line of sight. Thanks.
So maybe if you want to post on Slack, just because we got to go to the next.
I can ask you later.
Or yeah, you're talking or talk to her later, yes.
Okay, all right. So our next speaker will be Ryan Feifel.
I guess about new mid IR diagnostic.
All right. Thanks, Mike. So like Mike said, my name is Ryan Feifely. I am an NPP fellow at NASA Goddard. And so today I'm going to talk a bit about this mid infrared diagnostic that we derived using the bat sample. So do I have control of this? Because I see the cursor moving around. Apparently not.
That's weird.
Sorry. Let's just. Yeah, they have. I've seen this happen before. We might just have to reopen it.
Yeah, that's okay.
Sorry about that. Yeah, what are they doing? Why are they messing with our stuff?
Okay, sorry. I think you're good. They just ended it again. Who's who's controlling this? Evidently.
Let's see.
I'm getting pumped.
Yeah. All right, let's try it one more time. Yeah, it's definitely somebody else moving the cursor. I think they're trying to connect the webinar, but honestly, there is nobody probably on the webinar, so.
Okay. All right, go ahead. We'll see. We'll see if it closes again. All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead. Assuming I assuming I can. There we go. So obscured AGNs get a lot of attention in literature, rightly so. If you're in the session, I probably don't have to, you know, convince you that they're important. But they're invoked in a variety of evolutionary frameworks for quasars and quasar lifetimes. They are a significant fraction of Compton thick AGNs required to reproduce the cosmic X ray background. And so over the last 15 years or so, you've seen these fractions rise from about 12% up to even now 50% possibly required. So for example, this is Bookner 2015 showing that averaged across cosmic time. That Compton thick agent should make up about 40% of all AGNs. And then to me, Tonima's work actually showed that it's probably closer even to 50%. And Chris Carroll has shown something similar using observations. So this is probably a substantial fraction of the total of AGN population. So it's important to find these and have a census of these obscured AGNs. And so we took the the X ray catalogs from Claudio Ricci's 2017 work. And Kohei Chikawa's 2017 and 2019 catalogs in the mid infrared to sort of probe this. So on the left hand side, you have the well known two to 10 KEV observed luminosity versus the 12 micron luminosity. And here I have the Swift bat plotted, the colors are indicating the column densities that were spectroscopically determined. And so the Asmus relation of 2015 is in the dashed black line, that's for an unobscured AGN. I mean, so you could see as you sit below that relation, you start to pick out these Compton thick AGNs. Now we looked at the wise photometry, so specifically the W four compared to W two. And you can see that there's a large spread, but there's a general uptrend with column density. So you start to move towards redder colors at higher columns. And so we said, okay, let's smash these two together and come up with the diagnostic. And so that you get this plot here on the left. So you can see the upper left locus is the unobscured and lowly obscured systems. And as you move down to the lower right locus, these are the heavily obscured or the Compton thick AGNs. And again, Y axis, this is the two to 10 to 12 micron. And on the X axis, this is the W four to W two ratio. And so, you know, so we have this nice, nice plot. We can develop a diagnostic box using this. So that's on the right hand side. I've broken this up into column density bins. So panel A is unobscured AGMs, panel B is lowly obscured. Panel C is mildly obscured, so this is 10 to the 23 up to 10 to the 24. And then the last panel, a Compton thick AGMs. And so the dash dotted box with the dotted or dashed line on top. That's our diagnostic box for Compton thick or heavily obscured AGNs. And it's highly complete, so it's almost 90% complete for Compton thick AGNs. It's pure at about 60%. So it's a fairly reliable metric. But I should say that the majority of the contamination of this box comes not from unobscured or lowly obscured systems. But it's from moderately obscured AGN. So you're still picking out things you're still interested in. Am I doing three minutes? We also derived new relations relating the observed two to 10 KEB luminosities to the 12 micron luminosities. So that you can sort of on your own plug and chug your X ray and mini Fred luminosities and derive an indirect estimate of your column density. This is not something that's new, it's been done before, but this is a new relation we fit using the Swift bat sample. And we did the same thing for this new mid infrared cut of the wise for to wise two as a function of column density. Again, large spread, you can see the error bars are quite high. If you're interested, in the paper, we discussed that black dashed line, that is a an empirical model. Of what you would expect. And the orange line is our best fit. So we have these all in the paper that came out. Let's see, oh. I'm almost out of time. Okay, so I'll skip ahead. We looked at a possible contamination. The the main point is that you can't blindly use this this diagnostic box to look for AGNs. You'll end up picking out star formation systems by accident. So you have to know that it's an AGN and then you can diagnose the column densities. Host galaxies can contribute non negligibly to the mid infrared colors. So but that actually works out in our favor. Again, check the paper if you're interested in that. And it also picks out heavily obscured AGNs and Compton thick AGNs that are actually missed by bat. So this is NGC 4968. It's a Compton thick AGN, but it's not in the back catalog. So which is a nice little test. So, you know, a lot of use. So looking ahead, what we could do is we probably should look more at the host galaxy contributions to the mid infrared colors and understand. How that affects these results? How it affects your ability to select Compton thick AGNs? We should look also at how mid infrared colors change as a function of red shift. So we can see how this diagnostic changes as you move through cosmic time. But there's immediate applications, you know, within the next few months that that you could use this force. A very example, Erosita DR one is going to be out and should be this quarter. And so you could take Rosita's AGN X ray catalogs cross match to wise. And then throw them out on this plot and see if you can start picking out Compton thick populations. And so I'm a little bit over time, so I'll end it there and happy to take any questions you have.
There's any questions? Go ahead. Come up to a microphone. Yeah, I go ahead. Or I can repeat it.
Very nice talk. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So my question is that, do you think if the red shift will affect your color selection of the Compton big agent?
Yes, I do. So we didn't explore it in the paper, but I did some very, very preliminary analysis, just cursory. And there wasn't a clear correlation when you looked at the colors, but that could have been due to. Low number statistics, it could have been due to contamination that I wasn't controlling for. So and it could have been that I wasn't using fine enough binning, fine enough red shift binning. So there's a lot of things that really should be tested there that I didn't have the opportunity to do in the original paper, but we should look at in the future.
So you are saying that to apply your selection rule to the Euro Zeta catalog. Some test maybe. Maybe done before that.
Yeah, yeah, you either need to focus on local red shift sources or we need to do some work before we can apply it to higher red shift stuff. So you're absolutely correct.
Thank you.
Of course, thank you.
Thanks, Ryan. That was good.
Of course, thank you.
Erosita is, is of course biased against Compton that Gaian.
That's true.
And and much worse than obviously worse than Swift bat, but we're still than Chandra XM. So I'm wondering if a better application might be to the. You know, the full Chandra and XMM catalogs, particularly if you have a red shift cut, say, just look above red shift three or red shift four. And then you're closer to the bat band.
Yeah, no, that's an excellent point. We had looked at one of the XMM fields, which was actually this next slide. We had looked at the XXL and the with field in paper. And but the problem was that, you know, low, low number statistics. This is what basically you had in the local red shift. And so what we should do is we should use these these catalogs from Chandra and XMM in like the deep fields. Is that? Oh, oh, yeah, no, absolutely. Yeah, definitely, even even better. Yeah, no, I think that would be an excellent way to go. Yeah.
Okay, great.
All right, thank you so much.
Okay, so our next speaker will be Krista Smith from Southern Methodist University, talking to us about the bath AG and radio survey.
Yeah, hi, everyone. So my part in the vast survey in imaging has been taking radio images at 22 gigahertz. Of 268 of the radio quiet bass AGN and we call this the bars survey, the bass ADN AGN radio survey. This is 22 gigahertz imaging at approximately one arc second resolution taken in the K band by the JBLA for 268 radio quiet bat AGN. This was done in a series of four programs, some 2013 to the present. And it the result, the goal was a comprehensive radio atlas of both the cores of radio quiet AGN. But also the extended morphologies in the radio to study feedback interactions and star formation in these galaxies. This slide just shows a smattering of some of the interesting single results that we have found. We have two examples in the top left of large jet like morphologies in radio quiet compact ellipticals. So if you do the radio to optical luminosity ratio in those objects, it's very radio quiet. But you can see it kind of looks like a miniature radio loud system. On the top right, we have a star formation ring that is beautiful and spatially resolved in the nucleus of IC 2637. The yellow contours on the gray image are showing this physical scale and the radio image is on the right. Bottom left, we can see what we kind of expected. This is was one of the drivers of the survey was to look for these radio signatures of radiatively driven gas outflows. So the Hubble image with the radio contours is on the right. And we found some interesting surprises. In the bottom right, you can see that we have a radio source kind of sitting up in the outskirts of that galaxy NGC 5252. And that turns out to be the radio counterpart of a known ultra luminous X ray source. And we have a few of those in our survey, so we're working on the spectral energy distributions at high frequencies of those sources. I'll show only a couple of results from the survey because of the limited time. We have found what I think is one of the most important results of the survey. Which is that there is significant host wide feedback and star formation suppression in these radio quiet AGN. Even when the radio structure, as you can see on the left here in blue, is significantly smaller spatially than the size of the host galaxy. And then on the right is the main sequence of star formation in gray. Those are, those are non star forming or non AGN star forming galaxies. And the Y axis there is the specific star formation rate and the X axis is stellar mass of the galaxy. And the triangular shapes, the red and orange triangular shapes are the objects on the left. The objects in our sample with these small kiloparsec scale radio structures. And the star formation rate is significantly suppressed in these objects. We believe that it is not a jet. It is actually the the radio that we see here is the signature. Of the shock interaction between a radiatively driven outflow from the AGN and the host ISM. So I mentioned at the beginning that in addition to studying the morphologies of these and extended radio images. We're also curious about using the high frequency fluxes of the cores of AGN to study the origin of radio emission in radio quiet AGN. We have several results in the 2020 paper, the first 2020 paper that go into this. But I'll just point out this one, which is that the bat AGN, which are the purple triangles in this plot. Fall along the black hole fundamental plane. You can get an idea of where the bad survey gets us compared to some previous surveys. And this three dimensional relationship between the X ray luminosity. The black hole mass and the radio luminosity extends from stellar mass black holes all the way up to supermassive black holes. We do see an increased scatter in this relationship in the bat AGN. Probably because the bat AGN include high accretion rate sources, very luminous sources and genuine quasars. Whereas many of these other objects on the plot are the analogues of the hard state and X ray binary. So their low accretion rate jet launching AGN. So just a couple of future directions and current work to wrap up. My graduate student make in Magno, who's here this weekend, had a very successful poster, popular poster this morning. Has been, has finished the 22 gigahertz data reductions. But that is now expanded the analysis to look at every archival radio image of these sources that we can find. And construct very broadband radio SEDs. That's not me doing this. Someone's moving the mouse. I don't know. It's just like, I can try pushing this. Okay, thanks. All right, I don't know. So. So so this is just an image of all of the radio archival data that Macon has 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 found. And he's constructing SEDs from 240 megahertz out to our relatively high frequency 22 gigahertz. To study the ages of the jet of the outflows and various other aspects of these sources. And finally, my undergraduate student Andrea Reyes has just finished and out reducing the muse images. So we got a program to observe many of these objects with kiloparsec scale radio structures with Muse to study their gas kinematics. We've seen beautiful, striking spatial correlations of the radio emission, which are the green contours on the left with ionized gas emission and Muse, that's O three. And then on the right, we have some very cool kinematics. The pink are the radio contours at different resolutions. The green is a higher resolution radio contour. And we see driven outflows decoupled kinematics in the center of the galaxy. Yeah, they're giving me the mouse back. Okay. So you can see that the velocity field in the center here is aligned with the radio outflow. But that the kind of general rotation of the galaxy is different at larger scales. We also see a gas velocity aligned with the radio structure in this image. So to wrap up. So to wrap up, radio quiet seafords are the majority of active galactic nuclei. So while feedback is spectacular in the big radio loud quasars, if we truly want to understand galaxy evolution for the bulk of galaxies in the universe, understanding feedback and the origin of radio emission and radio quiet seafords is key. And so the good news, more good news is that all these radio images are now available to the public on GitHub. Macon Magno, my graduate student has has put them there. You can look at thumbnails. You can download the Fitz files. This is all under the auspices of the bass survey. So if you are interested, the QR code is there. Macon's GitHub handle is also given. So feel free to use these. Happy to work with you if you need any help and thank you for your time.
Hi, thank you. Thank you for that talk. Amazing data. I'm wondering about the nature, right? You said about the nature of the outflows and you mentioned that you think it's outflows and shock shocks. So is it synchronous animation or how do you know? Do you have like an CD map or?
Right. Okay, so I had exactly one extra slide, which is precisely what you asked, because it takes a while to get into this. So I know we're short on question time. So what we did was basically estimate the energetics of the outflow that we observed based on the radio shape and size and morphology. And compared that to the amount of star formation suppression you would need to get down below where you can see it on the main sequence plot. So we had, we made that estimate of how much you would need in multiple ways. Disruption of the gas, heating of the gas or driving the gas out of the galaxy. And we calculated the energy in the radio outflow in two different ways for two different assumptions. The red assumptions, the red bars are showing if you if you make those calculations, assuming that's a classical jet using jet power relations. And then the blue bars are the assumption that it's the shock signature of an out of a wind. And for each of these groupings is a galaxy. You can see them, the names of the galaxies on the bottom. And the dashed black line for each galaxy is the threshold required to cause the star formation suppression that we see. And so you can tell that the blue bars almost always exceed that requirement and the red bars not often or don't often do that. And so it was an energetics argument to get to this conclusion.
Sure.
The test that is it shouldn't vary. It's shock.
So Macon probably knows the numbers better, but there are about ten objects that accidentally got observed in more than one of those. And in a couple, you saw some variability in the morphology, right? So there are some where it's letter perfect, exactly the same. And then there's some where the morphology looks a little different. But we need to do more work to make sure it's not a sensitivity or phase issue before we know.
Okay, great. So our next speaker will be Mary Powell from Stanford University.
So a powerful way to constrain the mechanisms that grow supermassive black holes is looking beyond their host galaxies to their larger scale dark matter halo environments. Characterizing the AGN halo connection over time can independently tell you something about how the black holes coevolve with their galaxies and it can test various scenarios for how AGN are triggered. One way of measuring large scale environment is through AGN clustering measurements. The bass sample is particularly good for these measurements because in addition to the survey being a very large volume and fairly complete, it also overlaps with the two mass galaxy survey, which I'm showing here in the black points. The AGN are shown by the magenta points. And so by cross correlating the AGN with the larger galaxy sample, you can get very good AGN clustering statistics, especially on smaller spatial scales. So the overarching question that motivated this work was to what extent black hole growth depends on its host halo environments. And so specifically, I addressed this by investigating the correlation between black hole mass and halo mass, testing whether or not these two parameters are correlated by using the clustering and abundance of the bass AGN. So I tested two different models for the relationship between black hole mass and halo mass. In one case, I assumed the established relations between the black hole galaxy masses and between the galaxy and halo masses. And in the second model, I introduced an additional correlation where for fixed galaxy mass, the black hole also correlates with the halo. So this would result in a much tighter correlation between these two parameters. And and to see which of these models is preferred by the data set, I simulated many mock AGN samples based on each model by populating black holes and galaxies into dark matter halo or duck. Sorry, dark matter simulations and assuming the measured Eddington ratio distribution function. And I compared the number of realizations that produced AGN luminosity functions and clustering measurements that are consistent with the vast measurements for each model. And so after doing this, I found that the second model in which the black hole mass does correlate with the halo mass is statistically preferred with the significance that depends slightly on the constraints and priors used. And as one more test, we looked at the clustering in two different mass bins. So that's shown here by this correlation function plot where we find that larger black holes seem to be more clustered than smaller mass black holes on small scales. And so looking at what each model predicts, these dotted lines correspond to the predictions of model one in the same mass bins. And these solid lines show the prediction for model two, which does a slightly better job at reproducing the clustering differences on small scales. Although we'll have to wait for more data to confirm this. And then I I also would like to briefly touch on the clustering differences between type one and type two AGN. So the models I described assumed a single Eddington ratio distribution function. But as Teneuma has shown, this is different for type one and type two AGN thought to be associated with the covering factor of obscuring material. And in various surveys, it's been found that type one and type two AGN cluster differently. Which would imply the unification model is incorrect in some way. And in this sample, we don't find very large differences, maybe a bit on the smallest scales. So to see if this, if the different Eddington ratio distribution functions impact these measurements, I forward modeled type one and type two AGN as before with the different adding to ratio distributions and calculated their clustering. And I found that a little bit of difference between the two is predicted, but not much. Meaning that this could be contributing to the differences in clustering observed, but the effect is below the current level of statistics. So my takeaways is that we found that the scenario where a black hole mass is correlated with this host halo mass is for for preferred by the bass AGN, which would indicate that the halo is connected to black hole formation or growth in some way. And we also find that the different Eddington ratio distributions for type one and type two AGN result in slight differences in their clustering measurements when selecting based on luminosity. But it's not a large effect for the sample. Thank you.
So I really like this idea that the halo is integral to the black hole formation and growth, and I can think of a few ways that that might physically be true. But could you just expand on kind of what aspects of the halo you think are promoting this? Or is it just the structure, just simply the mass of the halo? Or is there more subtlety there?
So in in the models, I use the sub halo mass specifically to correlate with the the black hole mass. And if that's the case, it could mean a few different things. It could mean that, you know, the most massive black holes today were more likely formed in just the over dense regions where there's a lot of mergers early on. Could also be relevant for feedback on larger scales. So I think a lot more work needs to go into investigating this. Yeah.
I will ask a question. So you know, that slight difference that you showed between type ones and type twos, was that like the smallest scales, right? So trying to think about that in terms of like separations, that's still more than like a hundred kiloparsec kind of.
Yeah, so this, the, the, this plot is in mega parsecs. So the smallest scales are point one mega parsecs. Yeah, so yeah, it's larger than that.
Yeah. So that's it. I mean, I was trying to think about like situations like flybys or, you know, not sort of major murders, but some type of encounter or something where you might get an increase in observation because of, you know, tidal torques or something, but maybe that's just too large cause and offset, but interesting.
Yeah, I mean, if they are in slightly over dense environments, then it could yeah, mean that they prefer environments where there is more minor mergers. Yeah.
Okay, so actually let's go to our last talk. So much. It's good.
Okay, looks good. So.
Thank you, Mike. Yeah, our last talk will be by Hans Krim from the telling us about the one fifty seven month survey catalog and beyond. So great way to finish up.
Okay, yeah, thank you very much. So I'm presenting this on behalf of prominently Amy Lean, who is who is the author of the one fifty seven month paper that's coming forward and then a bunch of other people at Goddard and elsewhere, but basically the the bat team. So we'll just be talking about the current status. And I guess I should look over here so I can be by the microphone. And then what's what's new in the survey, what what preliminary result? Geez, oh, boy.
I think we found that if you do.
Okay, I can come at you. Yeah, somebody is. Okay, well, anyway, I'll try to try to get to get through this. So so basically, I mean, just want to talk about what's what's new in the one fifty seven month. And we reprocessed the date, all of the bat data since February two thousand and seven. And this was necessary because the the bat survey response file was updated after that. And so what you see in the in the plot here, and it's hard to read the read the scale is basically the the calibration correction. And the response file that's made for the survey uses the crab spectrum to calibrate. So the response basically forces the crab spectrum to two point one five. And you can see that just due to electronic effects that this is has changed, I mean, fairly significantly over the over the years. So just very quickly, I'll just go through the general analysis method, because I mean, this is the 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 root of all of this fantastic data that that everybody has been has, you know, been been talking about, well, not not the result of the data, but kind of the the core of all of this. So basically, I mean, there are two, there are two steps. I mean, we use use the tools that are in the in the swift data release. We use that survey and we basically make images in in eight bands and you see the bands down at the bottom. And we also been in time so that we've been in terms of snapshots, which are basically a pointing. And there is basically because of variations from detector to detector, we have what is called, we call a pattern noise. And that's something that has to be calculated from the data. And that is a very, very important correction. So we have to run through all the data in stage two again, applying subtracting that pattern noise. And then we make mosaic snapshot images for each month for the entire survey interval. We add, we add them up, weighting them by the by the crab waiting in each of the bands. And since the AGN spectra are, you know, pretty close to the same spectral index as as the crab, this is a important way to enhance detection of AGN, because that's what we that's what this really is all about. I mean, we detect other sources, but the the key is AGN. And then we run Bat Cell Detect to find the sources. And so if you're interested in the details about how all this works, I mean, there have been three papers and they're just indicated there for the for the various iterations of the survey and all of this is described in great detail. So one of the things that has happened with this this iteration is that we are and I'll show in a subsequent slide. I mean, we are getting into the unavoidable systematics of of a coded mask imaging system. And so our new detection, we have two hundred and five sources, and that's only about half of what would be expected just from the statistics. So I mean, other than the, you know, really heavily competent thick sources, I mean, we expect to have a complete complete sample. I mean, that that goes goes out with the distance. And so if you do a little bit of arithmetic there, you would expect that the number of sources would go as T to the three fourths. And we get, we we don't, we're not getting to that. So this is basically the the T to the three fourths plot here. So just the 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 number of of or the the sensitivity as a function of the exposure time. And this is we this this was shown in the hundred and five month paper. This is basically the 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 sensitivity as a function of time. And if you add in the hundred and fifty seven month, I mean, you can see and it's you know, a little bit of of deviation from the from the line here. And since it's a log plot, I mean, that is sufficient to account for, you know, the the deficit of sources. So basically, we are starting to this is starting to flatten out and starting to be, you know, unless unless there's something, I mean, you know, was as Aaron was asking about about earlier doing to beef up the analysis, we are basically starting to see the 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 flattening out due to the systematics of the coded mask. So just a couple of quick slides. This is our all sky, all sky map. The bat, the exposure statistics. And again, I mean, these are going to be be in the paper, but the the places where we have the highest exposure are at the at the ecliptic poles, because we the bat basically points to avoid the sun and the and the moon and the planets. And so we we have an uneven distribution of of exposure. And so you can see that you can see that over here. I mean, what you know, we're not, not, not completely even just because I mean, that is, that is pointing, I mean, basically to either follow gamma ray burst or to follow target of opportunities. But we try to avoid, well, we have to avoid the the sun. These are the the statistics. The sources here, so among the, so the the left is the total the total sources detected and then the un in the newly detected those two hundred and five sources, a lot of them are still unidentified. And that's part of the process that's going on now. I mean, why the survey paper has not been released yet and don't don't get my mouse there. And so there's still unidentified sources, a lot of these, I mean, since we're getting into the fainter sources have not been previously observed by by XRT or by other X-ray, X-ray telescopes. And so we've we've requested follow up fill in targets for some of these sources to try to identify them. And this is the the summary. So we're this, this goes through December two thousand and seventeen. We're seeing the emergence of systematic noise and the data will be will be available on this site quite soon. I mean, we're we're certainly expecting to release this this spring. And then the the future of this, I mean, you know, at this, at this point, I mean, it really is not I mean, necessary, I mean, to you know, publish, publish new papers will have on the on the survey, we'll have, we'll have new data releases. But where we'd really like to be and we're talking with, we're talking with people at the Heasark and and elsewhere, I mean, to try to get this really systematized so that we can create monthly updates on the bat survey webpage. And then on, I mean, we're going to need to release the the data for the past five years, but we want to to make this a bit more, but just systematic process. systematic processing. I mean, it's not, it's not an easy thing to do because of the pattern noise and all the all the rest, but and then just say the bat team Tyler and Shabashis are working on creating a more human friendly code, because I mean, there's a lot that has come from this bad catalog, but there's also a lot more that can be done with the bat data itself. And we're really hoping to make it more more accessible and user friendly. So thank you.
I'll ask the same question I asked before, but maybe a little bit more detail. So you you claimed that we're running into unavoidable systematic noise that comes from the coded aperture technique. Do you mean that? Or do you mean that another, because you that 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 pipeline you showed has many steps, right? And many of those steps have systematics associated them. One of them is the mosaic step. Right? The mosaic step has systematics associated with it. You write each of the, each of the, each of the images has pattern noise, the background variance can change. Have you, do you know where the systematics are coming from?
No, I mean, we haven't, we not, not, not in detail. I mean, I I can say say confidently that just just based on understanding of the, I mean, the 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 coded, the coded mask, I mean, does have limits. I mean, just the way, I mean, any, any telescope has limits. I mean, at that, at some point, you're, you, you know, you're, you're not going to be able to pull anything anything more out. Have we reached that point? Probably not. I think you're right that there are other places where there can be an improved improved analysis. And you know, and part of the question, I mean, how hard we work on that is, I mean, the question that you asked Mike at the outset, I mean, is it how much is it worth? I mean, if this is going to get us, you know, 50 new, 50 new sources, I mean, is that worth you know, six months of effort? I mean, I don't, I don't know. And
Do you know, Mike, like if we can return to the T to the minus one half statistically limited curve? Like, do you care? Do you care enough about a few hundred more sources like what or?
I mean, it's the deepest map in the sky. So I mean, there are, there are areas like changing movie again, where you would want the light curves, probably more than. And you could do weighting of different bands to increase the sensitivity, but you, I, I mean, this is the deepest we have in the
Sorry, is that a yes or?
Yeah.
Okay, because it sounded like you were saying, no, we want cadence more than sensitivity. That's what I heard.
Well, I mean, we don't have any, the problem is we don't have any cadence right now, but I think Tyler is trying to solve.
Yeah.
Right. So if you have a new star observation and your source change, we'd like to look at that. But I mean, honestly, the 105 month, you know, was just an increase in 20% or something like that. And you have another 400 sources. So I don't know if you could recover 200 sources, they're the finest sources in the sky. So you get a number of confidence at the end and it's the sky map we have. So.
Well, what about the room? Like, how much do you guys want that? Because I I'm convinced it's possible. So you know, you guys have invested tons of effort into follow up and I'm hoping that we can get people to invest the effort into the basic data analysis as well.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So we should probably end the session since I know everybody's going to probably mini.